Okay, now we're on.
We are now. Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the Greenville City Council meeting. I would like to call the May 10th, 21 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor Pro Tem Glover and I will be moderating the meeting. Our invocation, our prayer will be by Attorney Emmanuel McGirt and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Glover. Let us pray. Eternal God, we lift up our eyes unto the hills. From whence cometh our help? Our help cometh from the Lord who makes, make of heaven and earth. We invoke your presence into this evening's council meeting and ask your blessings upon Mayor Connolly and his absence and his family and the passing of his father. We ask your blessings also upon the entire city council, city staff, members of the public, and the entire city and county. We pray that you abide within us, transform us for your glory, and grant rest unto our weary souls. For Christ's sake, in his name, I pray. Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have our roll call, Madam Clerk.
All right, yes ma'am. Mayor Connolly, and he has informed us he will not be attending tonight. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield, and he has informed us that he will not be joining us tonight at the meeting. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I am here.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover, we have a call.
All right, okay, we'll go to approval of the agenda. We'll now move to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam City Manager, are there any recommended changes?
No, Mayor Pro Tem Glover, no changes this evening to the agenda.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Okay, so I heard a motion made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Daniels, and I will take the roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, Mayor Pro Tem Glover, five zero.
Okay. Okay, we just approved the agenda, right? Okay, and now we'll have our public comments. I need to read this statement, public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for hearing conducted at the meeting, at this meeting or another meeting during the same week which will not be discussed. A total of thirty minutes is allotted with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted thirty minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted thirty minutes expire. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover, we did not receive any registered speakers tonight for public comment and I will take a look in the public input inbox just to see if there's any messages. And Mayor Pro Tem Glover, we have not received any messages either.
All righty, very good. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Madam Manager, please present the items for comment.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The consent agenda includes the following items. Minutes from the June 11th, 2020, February, I'm sorry, April 5th, 2021, and April 8th, 2021, city council meeting. Item number two is an order authorizing $7,979,298 of installment refinancing, agreement and related resolution for the refunding of the City of Greenville series 2011 general obligation bonds, 2015 special obligation revenue bonds, and 2019 taxable installment sale. And item number three are various tax refunds greater than $100. Mayor, that, Pro Tem, that is the consent agenda.
Okay. And, Madam Clerk? Do we need to vote on the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, so I heard a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Daniels. I will do the roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, Mayor Pro Tem, five zero.
All right, okay, motion pass. New business? Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The first item of new business is Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Nine to the 2021 City of Greenville budget, special revenue grant fund, capital projects fund, and the establishment of a new revenue fund for occupancy taxes. Director of Financial Services Byron Hayes has the presentation. Mr. Hayes?
Okay, can you all see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem and members of council, this is Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Nine. Budget Amendment Nines includes adjustments to the general fund, the Convention Visitors Authority Fund, Wreckin' Parks Capital Projects Fund, the Debt Service Fund, the Public Works Capital Projects Fund, the Grant Special Revenue Fund, as well as includes the establishment of the occupancy tax fund and the reclassification of the Red Light Camera Fund. Breakdown of the amendments, we are recognizing grant funding from the GCC block grant for four police department in-car camera systems. That's an increase to the Grant Special Revenue Fund of $22,000. We allocating funding from Public Works to Shepherd Memorial Library for facility improvements. That's an increase to the Shepherd Memorial Library Fund of $60,000. We're also adjusting the Shepherd Memorial Library budget to what was adopted for FY 2021 to match the allocation adopted by Pitt County, which is a decrease to the library fund of just over $210,000. We are moving funding from the engineering budget to the Public Works budget to properly match the scope of work for services provided by Metronet. That is a neutral impact to the general fund of $570,000. We are recognizing funding received from GUC by the CBA for the African-American Cultural Trail application. That's an increase to their budget of $2,500. Realocating the remaining funding from a closed Wreckin' Parks Capital Projects budget to the Water Sports Facility project within that Wreckin' Parks Capital Project Fund, which is a neutral impact to the fund of just over $6,700. Additionally, we are closing Recreation and Parks Capital Projects, including the Town Common Parking Lot Project, the Volleyball Court Project, and the Sycamore Hill Gateway Project, which is a decrease to the Wreckin' Parks Capital Project budget of $2.4 million as those projects close. And we are reallocating funding within the Wreckin' Parks Capital Projects Fund to cover the costs associated with the Epps renovation project. That's a net neutral impact to the fund of $100,000. And lastly, we are establishing a new special revenue fund for occupancy taxes and recognizing funds transferred in from the Debt Service Fund and the Public Works Capital Projects Fund, which is an increase to the new fund of just over $3 million. And as a result of these amendments, the city's operating fund increases to just under $156 million. And staff recommends approval of the City Greenville Operating Fund Ordinance, the Capital Projects Fund Ordinance, and the Special Revenue Fund Ordinance, including the establishment of the occupancy tax fund and the reclassification of the Red Light Camera Fund within the Special Revenue Fund Ordinance. Any questions?
I have one, Madam Pro Tem.
You may go. Mrs. Smiley?
Thank you. What is the impact, if, what is the, what are the implications, if any, of the $2.4 million de-obligation in the Wreckin' Parks Capital Fund, that you're closing those projects?
So, due to the fact that those projects are closing, we're just clearing those budgets off of the ordinance. Nothing is actually impacted with the projects as, in terms of how they were completed. What little funding that was remaining from those particular projects will just be reallocated either to other projects within that fund or sent back to the general fund.
And then, the other question I had was, and this may be more properly in the manager's report rather than related to this, but maybe we could get an update on what you know about, what the staff knows about the process, the progress Metronet's making. I just noticed that there was a line item in the budget relating, in the budget ordinance related to that. It's my, I have no questions about the amount or the ordinance. It's solely a question of the, you know, how things are going with that project.
Right, so Councilmember Smiley, we continue to meet, we continue to work daily with Metronet. We believe that Metro, Metronet has begun construction on their operations facility, which is on the north side of Greenville. They are, we are expecting plans for their hut site, which will be centrally located. That's essentially where the signal will come in. And we would anticipate possibly next week or the week after that Metronet would begin to act, to do the actual fiber, underground fiber, begin to install the underground fiber service in Greenville in their first LCP, which is sort of a, which is their first, I don't even know what LCP stands for. Their local, their first local network. So probably in the next two weeks, they would begin that construction.
And this is generally on this timeline they gave us originally. I mean, I'm not sure there's deviations at some level, but in general.
I, I think that we're generally in the, in the timeline. Certainly with all projects, crossing the initial hurdles, understanding what the, what the plan review process will look like, what the initial set of comments, what needs to be included on the plans. A lot of work is spent on that at the beginning of the process. I would expect by, in three to four months, we would be very, they would be moving very, very quickly. But, so this is just the beginning. All, all construction projects, the, the initial part of it takes a little bit of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move we approve the budget ordinance.
I'll second it.
It been, it's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Meyerhofer and Councilmember Smiley? Did I get the right one? Okay. And who was the, was it, Councilmember Bell? Was it you?
No, I think you had it right, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, that sounds like you like. Okay, all right.
Okay, I will take the roll call vote then. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye. That sounded different than those other guys, didn't it?
I'm gonna start voting for Will.
Motion, motion passes, Mayor Pro Tem, five zero.
Okay, okay. Now we'll move on to new business. Is this where we are? We moved kind of fast, keep up the good. We'll move on to new business. We now move to the new business. Madam Manager, please present the first item of business.
Right, so Mayor Pro Tem, we're actually on the, the second item of new business, so we would like to present the City of Greenville's Fiscal Year 21, 22 Proposed Budget.
Okay.
Okay, and so we, this is an important time of year for those of us that work in local government. This is our presentation of the recommended budget for the 21, 22 fiscal year. Over the next couple of minutes, Michael and I will review the recommended budget. I will start with an overview and highlights, and Michael will follow me with more detail on each of the funds. Overall, I am proud to say that this is a sound budget, grounded in the, the goals of the city council, and it will demonstrate that the city is in a sound financial, in, in a strong financial position. And so I'll proceed, we'll see the first slide, and Michael is running the slide, so we're gonna work together on this. So as you can see, our budget will total, the, the 21, 22 proposed budget will total about $144 million. It is made up of ten funds, the largest of which is the general fund, which represents 62% of the city's operating budget. There are nine other funds in, in various amounts representing the Transit Fund, Fleet Maintenance, Sanitation, Stormwater. Next slide. So as I indicated at the, at the beginning, this budget is really grounded in, or is a direct reflection of the city council's goals. And so the, we're gonna talk about each of those goals, and then we're gonna identify the highlights that show the budget impact on those goals. So first goal, first goal is to build a high-performing diverse organization to govern with transparency and fiscal responsibility and tell our story to the community and to the region. I am proud to say that this budget maintains the city's tax rate, current tax rate at 49.45 cents, which is a forty-year low. I'd like to repeat that again, a forty-year low on tax rate. That is remarkable. Next slide. This budget allocates 91% of the general fund revenues to core public services. You'll see that fifty, more than half of the general fund budget is allocated to police and fire, 50.6%, 21% of the budget is allocated towards engineering and public works, a little less than 10% for Wreckin' Parks, about one and a half percent for the Shepherd Memorial Library, a little less than 5% for planning and development, little less than four for information technology. And city support services, including the city manager's office, city attorney, and HR, and financial services represent a little less than 9% of the general fund budget. But again, 91% of the general fund budget is allocated to core, core public services, of which 50.6% over half is allocated to police and fire. Next slide. So some of the highlights continue as we talk about high-performing organization. The budget includes $858,000 reduction in general fund revenues that were corresponded to reductions in operating expenses to offset the impact of COVID-19. The budget includes an average of a 2% pay increase for employees, one and a half percent for merit adjustment, and .5 for market adjustment. The budget includes a 1.2% increase in the employer-funded retirement plans, 12.24% for law enforcement, and 11.40% for non-law enforcement positions. The budget includes two additional staff, staff members. One would be a position that we would add to our traffic services division. Traffic service maintains all the signs, the traffic signals, the speed humps that are installed over the city, and they are working, as all employees, they are working really hard, but we have found that they, that those traffic services need some additional assistance, so we've included one position for traffic services. We've also included in addition for an additional assistant city attorney position. The budget includes $100,000 increase in our post-employment benefits, or OPEB. It'll increase the total funding from $500,000 to $600,000, which moves us on our goal of achieving a million dollars in OPEB funding throughout the year. The budget includes $200,000 in new funding for information technology, infrastructure enhancements, and other data security initiatives. This has been an effort of the city over the last couple of years to fund the, both hardware and software associated with our RT infrastructure to ensure that our IT systems are sound and as sound as they can be. Next slide. This budget includes $125,000 in legislative advocacy and support at both the state and federal levels. It also maintains our sanitation pickup fee at $16 per month, which is the fifth consecutive year that the fee has been $16. So we'll go to the next goal. The next goal is about the economy. We want, the council's goal is to expand the economic hub of eastern North Carolina through proactive economic development and job creation. And this budget supports that goal. We've allocated, it includes a $2 million increase in projected tax revenues, which is reflective of a growing robust city economy. A little less than a million dollars is, is created through additional property tax revenues of about 2.53%, and a little bit more than a million dollars comes from additional sales tax revenues. And that is significant. We are very fortunate here in Greenville that we can talk about our growing and robust city economy. And the fact that we are able to derive an additional $2 million, an additional tax revenues is really reflective in that growing economy. This budget allocates $500,000 in funding to become, to continue our sustained membership in the Greenville ENC Alliance, our public-private partnership to support economic development. It includes $200,000 in funding for job creation grants, of which $100,000 is funded by the city and $100,000 is funded through Greenville Utilities. The budget includes $100,000 in funding for our NWBE Incubate to Accelerate Program, $25,000 in funding for skills development for Pitt Community College's Job Initiative Program, $24,000 in funding to support small businesses initiatives, and $20,000 in funding for facade improvement grants. Our third goal, our third goal relates to public infrastructure. The council's goal is to deliver public infrastructure improvements and execute existing opportunities related to transportation networks, recreation and parks, and stormwater projects. This budget includes 300, a $300,000 increase in street improvement funding for a total of $2.8 million in annual funding. Fairly sizable increase, and you'll see more information about that as we go on through the presentation. This budget includes the initiation of the Stormwater Utility Plan approved by the council in April of 2019. The plan funds over $70 million in stormwater capital projects, $46 million in stormwater operations and preventive maintenance over the next ten years. And the plan, this stormwater plan, will be funded with an annual increase in the stormwater utility rate of a dollar per EERU each year for the next four fiscal years. In addition to that, this budget includes funding to finance approximately $45.8 million of capital projects. Those capital projects include the build grant, Fire Station Number Seven construction, Fire Station Number One Bay extension, the replacement and relocation of the community pool, renovations to the Epps Recreation Center, and Phase Two construction of Wildwood Park. In addition to that, this budget includes $4.35 million in page Go funding for various capital initiatives, which include a million dollars for the facilities improvement projects, $375,000 in funding for computers and camera replacements, and a little less than $3 million in funding for the city's fleet, fleet replacement plan. The fourth goal relates to enhance community engagement and safety and wellness. And this budget supports these efforts by providing the, the following funding. It includes $120,000 in new funding for public safety radio replacements. It provides $150,000 in funding for pedestrian safety projects, $75,000 for the replacement of pedestrian street cameras. It includes funding for the Fire, for Fire Station Number Seven on Bays Water Drive and provides for the expansion of Fire Station One Bay. It also provides for the funding of the, um, construction in, of Phase Two of Wildwood Park. And the fifth and the final goal relates to building a thriving and attractive community by creating vibrant neighborhoods and expanding artistic, cultural, and recreational opportunities. And we do that through a number of ways. This budget includes $100,000 of funding for Uptown Greenville, a little more than $90,000 in funding for the Pitt, for the Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge, which includes $25,000 for arts administration, $21,000 for public art program, including Art on the Greenway, $5,000 for Artist and Resonance Program, and $40,000 for Smart City Grant Match for the Emerald Loop. In addition to that, the budget includes $17,000 in funding for the Greenville-Pitt County Chamber of Commerce, made up of membership, event sponsorships, and the Leadership Institute. Additionally, as we talk about a thriving community, we have several parks and recreation amenities in the budget. We've mentioned this before. This budget provides funding for the replacement and the relocation of the city's community pool to Thomas Foreman Park. As we've mentioned to the council before, our existing community pool is 48 years old, and it's time to replace, and we're really excited that this budget allows us to do that. It provides for the renovation, the budget provides for the renovation and the expansion of the West Greenville Epps Recreation Center located at Thomas Foreman Park. It provides an additional position to coordinate and execute city events programming at our new Wildwood Park and across the city. And finally, the budget includes some budget-neutral staffing reclassification for Wreckin' Parks to support the maintenance and operation of Wildwood Park and the Greenville Acrylic Center. In addition to that, this budget includes $500,000 for contract mowing and landscaping for Streets Rideaway and our city facilities. It includes $100,000 of funding for the Adopt a Street program, and it provides for a 1.5% increase in funding for Shepherd Memorial Library. So I'm pleased as an, as we look at the full puzzle, what this budget does is it supports and is grounded in the goals of the city council. It taught, we address organization, economy, infrastructure, community, and opportunity. And we're really pleased that we'll be able, we're able to bring you this well-rounded budget. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Michael. Michael will present more detailed on each of the funds. Michael, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. We'd like to start off with the general fund, and then we'll move into a conversation in regards to some of our other operating funds. I'd like to say that the general fund as presented is a balanced budget as legally required by the state of North Carolina, coming in at revenues and expenses matching approximately $89.9 million. That is always a good start. This budget is based off of the following budget preparation formula. It basically starts with the base budget, and then you take plus or minus various different budget adjustments to come to your proposed budget for the 2021, 22 fiscal year. And those budget adjustments include adjustment for COVID-19, the quote-unquote lingering impact of COVID-19 on our operations and our revenues. We have a very small but fund balance adjustment that is based off of the projections that we presented back to council in April, where we expected this year's operations to end and the impact that that would have on next year's fund balance, as well as the operating increases, decreases. increases, decreases that would be driven by the increase in revenues that we are projecting in next year. All I do is just kind of go through each one of these for the next few minutes. So we started off with a base budget of $88.6 million approximately. To that, we have a COVID-19 adjustment of $857,000 in revenue expenses. That is a downward adjustment on our revenues and expenses based off, again, the impact that we are projecting of COVID-19 as we move forward into next fiscal year. That impact is primarily in the form of recreation and parks revenues. On annual, we have about $1.1 million on a normal year in recreation and parks revenues. We're still seeing at this point in time, as we move into the beginning of next fiscal year, about a $300,000 to $400,000 impact, and as the restrictions, the state restrictions as far as the governor's mandate continue to lessen, we do anticipate that those revenues would return back to their normal kind of state, but planning on that in the budgeting process is much different. So as we've talked about in the past, we do maintain a pretty conservative budget, so we're just going ahead and adjusting for that now, and if they do, if revenues do kind of push, we'll adjust accordingly. Rescue transports, we are pretty much at the same level that we were pre-COVID-19, but there is a lag time in the billing for those services, so we're just a small adjustment down out of about a $3.3 million budget. Investment earnings, $145,000 at about a $700,000 budget, and park violation citations of about $152,000. And again, I do project as the restrictions continue to lessen that these revenues would return, but trying to maintain a conservative approach through the operations moving into next year's budget. So that's the downward side of the revenues. On the expense side, we have a minor adjustment to the supplies and materials allocation to departments of $70,000, and then the federal transit match. Ordinarily, in a normal year, we would make a transfer, a match transfer from the general fund to the transit fund. This year, as we, next year as we did this year, that transit match from the general fund will reduce to zero, and we'll be utilizing CARES money allocated to the city, specifically for transit operations. We received approximately $5 million in transit allocation through the CARES Act, and this will be some dollars that we set aside for the next year or two, maybe three, that would allow us to be able to use that CARES Act to operate that grant. We have $132,000 adjustment to fund balance on both the revenue and the expense side, and then we have a budgeted $2 million increase in our projected revenues for next year. And that is coming, as you heard the city manager state during the highlights, coming primarily in the form of property tax revenues and sales tax revenues, and various other net adjustments of approximately $40,000, and again, various other line items. That $2,49,000 in revenue is being allocated to the following expense line items. Includes the 2% wage increase of $1,091,000, which also includes that 1% increase in employer retirement rate increase in straight treasurer, includes the new assistant attorney position, other salary adjustments, which include the new traffic service position as well as the position for special events, a small adjustment in health insurance in the OPEB, taking that from $500,000 to $600,000, a $300,000 increase in street improvement funding to go up to 2.8 million, public safety radios, a recurring $120,000 appropriation for our public safety radios and police and fire rescue, as well as a increased adjustment to our liability insurance budget to match the projected premiums for next year. Over all, that nets out to a proposed budget, general fund budget for next year, approximately $89.9 million. Going through the general fund revenues, this is a graph that we've seen over and over here, it's very indicative of our annual revenues on an annual basis, with the vast majority of our revenues, over 90% of our revenues, coming from about seven line items. In fact, 67% of the revenue comes in only two line items, property tax revenue projected at $37.2 million, and sales tax revenue projected at $22.9 million. Now, I'd like to spend, since that makes up such a considerable amount of the general fund budget, we'd like to spend a few minutes going through those two in detail. With concerns to proposed property tax revenue, we always start off with a comparison to our benchmark cities, and you can see the list of those benchmark cities here. And Greenville's property tax rate stands at approximately 49.45 cents, as the manager said in our presentation, no increase from the current year's ad valorem rate, and you can see how that compares to the high point in Jacksonville on the high side, over 64 cents, and compared to Concord and Asheville under 48 cents on the low end. We rank the third lowest out of those benchmark cities. When you look at the property tax per capita, our capital, per capita revenues come in at approximately $388,60 per capita. That again, on the low side, as compared to Fayetteville and Jacksonville, and you can see the comparisons of Greenville and Fayetteville and Jacksonville military cities as compared to Greenville being a college city. On the high side, Asheville and Concord coming in almost twice that of the city of Greenville at $768.79 per capita for Asheville, and $664.70 per capita for Concord. Not much change as compared to what we saw last year during the budget presentation. As the manager stated, our property tax rate is projected to not increase next year, standing strong at 49.45 cents. That is a 12-cent reduction in the tax rate over the past 20 years. In fact, Greenville and the township Fountain are the only local governments that have an ad valorem property tax rate lower today than it was 10 years ago. That includes all municipalities and more particularly the county of Pitt. If you look at the growth in the property valuation, going from approximately $7.6 billion this current year to a projected $7.8 billion for next year, that's approximately a 2.53% increase and a $1.4 billion increase over the five-year period. That works out over the last five years to be at an average 4% annual growth rate, which is outstanding. Now, there are so many local governments within eastern North Carolina that would just die for this type of growth in its tax base that we are seeing. The revenues consistently increasing over the last 10 years, going from approximately $29.3 million in 2013 up to $37.21 million. That's an average 2% growth rate each year over that approximately 10-year period. And this is always an interesting graph that we look at as well. We see that in this graph, we see the revenues increasing on an annual basis, the property tax revenues increasing, but the tax rate decreasing. That is what we call last year, and I'm just going to repeat it this year, smart growth. We're not relying on an increase in the property tax rate to generate more revenue. We're actually using and relying on an expansion of the tax base based off of positive economic activity within our community to drive the operating revenues for the city of Greenville within the general fund. Sales tax revenue. This conversation could go on itself for a couple of hours. If we look at it, it's truly a mixed bag. If you look from 2011 through 2019, you cannot get much more consistent growth than what you are seeing here, just in a normal year. We're looking at anywhere probably between 4% to 5% growth in our sales tax revenues, very, very consistent growth. The last year, the full year before the pandemic, 2019, stood at $19.9 million in sales tax revenues. Last year, fiscal year 2020, which was crossed with the pandemic, even during that period, we saw a $1.4 million increase in our property tax revenues. This year, believe it or not, we are looking at revenues coming in at approximately $23 million. That's a projected $1.7 million increase from last year to this year during the pandemic period. 60% increase over the 10-year period. Now, there's a lot of things that could go into this number, specifically in the environment that we operate. Clearly, we are a growing community. We see a lot of construction, a lot of building going on, and as we've seen consistently, we are growing between 4% or 5%. However, this year might be a little bit skewed because of the fact that the pandemic caused people to be close to home, a lot of spending close to home, which had a tendency to drive those revenues up. For next year, we are staying fairly conservative, actually coming in, projected to come in right at where we're at, or this year, saying the budget at approximately $22.9 million. That is pretty much flat from where we're projecting this current fiscal year, but does represent a 5% increase above this year's budget. I'll say it again, we operate a conservative budget. Like to see those numbers stay strong in this next fiscal year before we go out there and take the leap of faith to leverage our operations on that budget. The general fund expense, we'll move on into that side of the income statement, a very consistent graph from what we see on an annual basis. Clearly, this city relies on people. We invest in people, we invest in our community and citizens that make up our community, but we also significantly invest in our employees to carry out the goals and mission of this city. And you see that represented in the fact that the budget on the expense side is 65% personnel expenses, salary, and benefits. And then we have department operations, pay-as-you-go, and street improvements, and we'll touch on a few of these as we move through the presentation. From the personnel side, from the highlights, we'd like to start off by saying that the salaries are net of a 3% vacancy adjustment. On an annual basis, we do carry a vacancy here with the city of Greenville. I'd like to say that on a positive note, we had seen an improvement in that vacancy rate over the last few years. That's on the positive side. The negative side, the pandemic has had an impact on that since we had a hiring freeze and a spending freeze, but now that that was lifted in the month of February and we're actively pursuing the employment of vacant positions, that vacancy rate, I project, will come back down to the improvement that we saw over the last few years. And I got a slide in here in a few seconds that we'll hit on that. But clearly, we are not 100%. We have, we do not have a zero vacancy rate, so there is a portion of our salaries that we reduce to compensate for that vacancy rate. A 2% employee wage increase is built into the budget with the matching benefits, the addition of one position in traffic services, one position in the city attorney's office, one position as a staff support position to coordinate and execute event programming, specifically at Wildwood. That is a park that a lot of time, effort, and money is going into, and the city manager made it clear to us that she anticipates that we are going to have that part energized over the next few months, starting the next few months, and that she expects to see that being utilized for a lot of events, and we are going to do that. We have a whole host of events that we have planned moving forward into the new fiscal year. A 1.2% increase in employer-funded retirement rate, and the $100 increase in OPEB funding. Over the last six years, we've seen an average increase in wage adjustments for our employees of approximately 2.4%, going from a high of 3.2% in 2018 to a 2% for next year. 2.4% for, 2.4% over the last six years is really great for our employees. You can see the vacancy rate, as I stated earlier, that vacancy rate, when I first came here back in 2015, was around the 8% to 10%. We did see an improvement in that rate coming in 2018, 19, but quite honestly, it just jumped back up with the freezing of the positions last year, and we didn't hire. That was lifted in the month of February this year, and we are actively pursuing the fill of those vacant positions. And the number of positions per 1,000 in population. Also, as you see here, this is a pretty strong graph, represents our operations, and what we're, the most we're getting out of the operations and the people we employ with our population continuing to increase, but the number of city positions per 1,000 in population, a steady decline between 2011 and 2015, and holding steady over the last four to five years. Very strong operations that you can see with the fact that we are a growing community, but we're actually utilizing our employee base efficiently and effectively. Now, pay-as-you-go projects, we've got $4.8 million representing 5.3% of our budget for next year, including the likes of facility improvement projects split between the Public Works Department and our Recreation and Parks Department, computer replacements, camera replacements, IT projects, pedestrian safety projects, and vehicle replacement program coming in at $3 million a year for vehicle replacements and public safety radios. Now, this is a snapshot of our vehicle replacements that's planned for the next five years or so. You can see that based off the replacement schedule, which is a mix of things, it looks at not only the age of the vehicle, the amount that we're spending on maintenance of the vehicle and the mileage on the vehicle, and that formula looks at the vehicles that we need to be looking at for replacement, and over the next five years or so, that is ranging from anywhere from $3.2 million to $6 million. And given the current appropriations and the projected appropriations we have for next year and growing those at 3%, overall, we're looking at about a 50% or 60% funding threshold for that. Just like street improvements, it's, if we look at the level of funding needed to fund each one of these programs at 100% each year, it's a voluminous amount, but we are proud to say that we're trying to maintain that level of funding in any given year, anywhere between the 50% and 60% threshold. And it will go up in some years and it will go down in some years based off of the needs and the level of funding. Looking at the transfers, the vast majority of the transfers is caught up in the debt service expense, comprising approximately $6.3 million out of the $7.9, 79%. Now, this is the list of outstanding debt that we have for next year, as well as the projected expense for the debt issuances that we will add in order to finance the construction of the $45.8 million in projects that the city manager spoke of earlier. That's approximately $6.3 million in debt service to fund the principal and interest of that outstanding debt. But if you look at this over the next seven or eight years, you see a trend here, and council, I'm proud to say that this is the long-range debt plan in motion. Again, we are, right now, getting ready in this next fiscal year to finance almost $46 million worth of projects, and that'll take us for the next two or three years, but once we get to that point, you see this cliff where that operating expense for debt service reduces by almost $2 million a year. Now, what does that mean? That equals a great opportunity. Now is the time where the city of Greenville needs to go ahead and start planning its next round of major capital projects, and that doesn't happen overnight. First of all, we have to vet what those, and the priority of those projects, and we have to design the projects and get them ready for contract construction. So the city manager and myself, we're on a plan that in the, at the planning retreat coming up in January, will probably be devoting a sizable amount of time to looking at where we go from here with concerns to planning. It's one thing to have a long-range debt plan that plays out on a sheet of paper with the numbers, but it's another thing to keep it in motion, because you know what happens after the next four-year period, after 2026, it drops another $2 million, which means that we're then ready to keep this rolling on a three- to four-year basis. Now, we'll take a second to play a game of Jeopardy, and we're going to jump right in the final Jeopardy here, so it's going to be winner-take-all on this answer. So the answer is, line item in city budget that has increased by 460% over the last seven years, with $25 million funded over this seven-year timeframe. Would anybody like to jump in?
What is street resurfacing?
Will Bell, you are correct. Councilmember Bell, what is street improvement funding? I'm sorry, I don't have a prize for you.
Seeing those streets resurfaced is my prize.
There you go. What a great, what a great prize. But look at this, guys, oh my goodness. Over a seven-year period, going from $500,000 a year in funding to this next year. Over a seven-year period, going from $500,000 a year in funding to this next year, funding at $2.8 million a year. A 460% increase over this timeframe. That averages out to a 28% annual increase, year over year, 28%. And it doesn't stop there with the great message. If you take the funding over this seven-year period, it's $15 million of reoccurring appropriations for street improvements. You add to that the $10 million that was financed or funded through the bond in 2015, again, $25 million put back into the streets of our community. Absolutely outstanding, council. Both past councils and this current council are to be commended for that. If we look at next year's budget, going up by 300,000, that's $2.8 million. And if you remember, we, given the level that the contracts came out for street improvements this year, the great pricing that we had and the timing of those contracts, we didn't spend the full allocation. Matter of fact, it was about $900,000 that will carry over into next year's operations, meaning that we will be funding approximately $3.7 million worth of street resurfacing in next year's budget. Now, the stormwater fund.
One from streets. What is our current estimate as to what, you know, the sort of break, what the sustainable annual funding is? That street lasts 25 years, and we got this much streets, what's 1/25th of the total cost of repaving all our streets?
Councilmember Smiley, I want to say from memory, just in a raw number, that if we were funding at 100%, and I'm hoping I'm answering your question, but what it would take to fully fund the streets based off of our mileage, the number of miles of streets, and the rate that they would need to be resurfaced, I want to say that it would be approximately $5 to $6 million, probably closer to the $6 million range. But I would have to go back and actually dig that number out.
Well, at one point, it was told the council it was more like $2.1 million.
Yeah.
But I know it, you know, it went up from there to, my last number I heard I thought was like $2.9 or $3 million, so I thought we were getting close, but maybe we're not.
Right, and we will have more information for the council in the coming months. We have our trans map analysis, which will, has evaluated the condition of all the city streets. We've also talked to the council in the past about some additional sort of interim maintenance that can go on the streets in order to prolong the life of the streets. We anticipate bringing the first review of the trans map data to the council at the June council meeting.
Thanks.
To move forward with the stormwater fund proposed for next year, we're looking at a revenue and expense budget of approximately $8.7 million, which as you heard Byron Hayes speak at the workshop, that does include implementation of the stormwater utility plan, which has a significant increase in the maintenance levels with concerns to both our current infrastructure and new infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, with inspecting that infrastructure, cleaning the channels, the utility audits, the cleaning of the pipes, as well as conditional assessments, and just appropriating dollars to replacement and maintenance of our infrastructure, about $1.5 million per year. As Mr. Hayes spoke in the workshop, looking at that $4 increase in that per ERU rate over the next four years, that would finance with revenue bonds possibly $54 million in capital projects. Then we have the projects, the maintenance projects on a pay-as-you-go, paid with cash process of about $1.5 million a year. And then the maintenance to fund those levels of maintenance that we spoke of on the previous slide, about $45.8 million over that 10-year period. So almost $116 million to fund this utility plan over the next 10 years. And that plan goes, looking at the current plan, the status quo, we will have the ability to finance and fund approximately $45.4 million of the projects and maintenance, whereas this proposed plan would up that significantly, almost $116 million. Now, looking quickly at some other funds, we have the sanitation fund coming in approximately $8 million, made up mostly of the fees charged for that service and both personnel and operating dollars. And as you heard the manager say through the highlights, this will be the fifth consecutive year that the rate stands at $16 per month. The debt service fund, which is just a mere reflection of the dollars that we just presented as part of the general fund, you see the allocation by debt service. Also, the convention center debt service that's funded through the occupancy tax of $684,000 for next year, making up $6.9 million in total. And then the health fund at $14.2 million. This is a total of both the employer contributions and the employee contributions across all city funds and our outline agencies. So in summary, as the manager stated, we're looking at a operating budget for next fiscal year of approximately $144.2 million comprised primarily of the general fund. And you see the sanitation and stormwater making up approximately $8 million in those two funds, and the health insurance fund being another primary fund at $14.2 million. This budget is a direct reflection of city council's strategic goals, putting those pieces together and maintaining the property tax rate at 49.45 cents, a 40-year low. And like I said, one of only two municipalities and county government to see a reduction in that over the last 10 years. Appropriates over 91% of the general fund revenues to our core public service area, provides for the implementation of the stormwater utility plan, $2 million in projected tax revenues, 2% average increase wages for employees, $300,000 increase in street improvements, $500,000 a sustaining member to the alliance, finances almost $46 million with the projects, while at the same time providing over $4 million on a pay-as-you-go basis for capital projects, $120,000 in public safety radio replacements that will also be recurring, maintaining the sanitation pickup rate at $16 per month for the fifth consecutive year. And once again, this budget is just the common link used to achieve all the goals of city council. And with that, both the city manager and myself will take any questions that you might
Any other questions? Very none. We'll move on.
Good job, guys. I appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Yes, great, John.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, I can go ahead and preview the May 13 agenda?
Okay.
Okay, so on May 13, Thursday, May 13, the council will, the council will recognize a couple of employees that have retired. The council will consider appointments to boards and commissions.
Let's see, first board that we have on the list is the Environmental Advisory Commission, Councilmember Meyerhoffer.
Yes. I'm going to make an appointment. Thomas Trevathan to the EAC, please.
Okay. Next board will be the Housing Authority, and that appointment actually goes to Councilmember Litchfield, and so we will circle back to him in the week. Next board is the Human Relations Council, Mayor Protem Glover.
I'll continue that.
Okay. And next, we have a few appointments. We also have, excuse me, I'm sorry, we have the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, Councilmember Meyerhoffer.
I will appoint Shamika White, and then I will also recommend appointment of Christie John to the county.
Okay. All right. And the next board is the Recreation and Parks Commission. There's a couple of assignments here. Councilmember Smiley for Gordon Dara's seat. Oh, I'm sorry, you're muted.
Gordon eligible for reappointment?
He is.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I intend to reappoint him.
Okay. Next is Councilmember Daniels for Mr. Darren White's seat, and he is also eligible.
And I plan to reappoint him as well.
Okay. Next is Councilmember Meyerhoffer for Ms. Carrie Watson's seat, and she has actually resigned.
Three for four tonight. How about that? Continue.
Still pretty good. Still pretty good. And the last seat for this board is for Councilmember Litchfield, is for Mr. James Yonker's seat. So we will circle back to Councilmember Litchfield. And last board is the Youth Council, Mayor Protem Glover.
I will, I will see if we have any appointments for, by Thursday.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
With school getting out, it's not so easy. They don't want to meet during the summer, so.
Yep. Okay. All right, well, Mayor Protem Glover and Madam Manager, that concludes the appointments for Thursday.
Thank you. The council will, at their May 13 meeting, will also hold the following public hearings. Item number three is an ordinance to annex the Klein W. Barber and Edna P. Barber property involving 1.580 acres located along the southern right of way of Dickinson Avenue extension and 1,180 feet southwest of Frog Level Road. Item number four is an ordinance requested by Colas Moore Jr. to rezone 1.4854 acres located at the northwestern corner of the intersection of Diamond Drive and Sapphire Court from unoffensive industry to heavy commercial. Item number five is a public hearing and an ordinance requested by MQ Construction LLC to rezone 2.385 acres located along Dickinson Avenue and southwest Greenville Boulevard and 600 feet west of Williams Road from RA 20 to R 6. Item number six is an ordinance requested by Michael Birch Longleaf Law Partners to amend Title IX, Chapter IV, Article E, Section 9486, dormitory development within the CDF UC District of the City Code by deleting the following section, 9486. And then 1, 2, dormitory development within the CDF UC District shall provide retail sales and/or non-residential uses with a minimum floor area of 10,000 square feet. For purposes of this requirement, the term floor area shall mean non-storage floor area which is used as retail sales and other non-residential uses where the architectural layouts are not available for consideration. The floor area will be calculated by multiplying 80% times the gross area designated as non-residential use until such time architectural layouts are available for consideration or occupancy has commenced, whichever is earlier. So that, just to confirm, the request is to delete that section from the code. Item number seven is an ordinance to designate the Flanagan Wagner House located at 903 East Fifth Street and further identified as Pitt County Parcel Number 14352 as a local historic landmark. And item number nine is a public hearing for the consideration of the 2021 Annual Action Plan for CDBG and Home Funds. The council will also have the following other items of business. A presentation of the proposed fiscal year 21, 22 operating budgets for the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, Shepherd Memorial Library, and Greenville Utilities Commission. They will have a presentation on Chapter 160D Changes, which is a new land use law for North Carolina. And the final item for consideration will be a Historic Preservation Commission's Resolution for an Anti-Demolition by Neglect Ordinance. And Mayor Protem, that will be the agenda for the May 13 meeting.
All right. Thank you, Madam Manager. As we move to comments from city council members. Councilman Daniels?
I would like to send condolences to the Conley family, Mayor Conley and his family at the loss of his father. I'd also like to thank the city staff for doing such a wonderful job. I mean, you guys always come through, and you are truly appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Bell?
All like of the statements, PJ, Jackie, kids, we're praying for y'all. We're sorry for every, you know, your loss, and just hope, you know, you're at peace and, you know, feeling loved. And also, I'd just like to say thank you to city staff for your work on the budget. You know, didn't have any questions because y'all did such a great job with your presentation to us in our small breakout sessions, but really excited about the financial health of our city and, you know, what kind of options are going to be on the table for us going forward because we've been fiscally responsible. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Bell. Councilmember Smiley?
I have no comments.
Okay. Councilmember, he's not here. Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
I'll just say ditto to what the other members had to say. I'm all set. Thank you, Mayor Protem Glover. Good job.
Thank you very much. Had done it in a long time. I guess the comments from the council members, and I'd like to comment also on the passing of the mayor's father. My heart goes out to you and your family because pass someone passing, even if you are expecting it, it never, it never feels right. So I want to keep praying for you, Jackie, and your kids, your mom, and your family. God bless you all. Okay, that's my comment. I'm done with that one. So, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
It's been a motion, it's been a motion, a second. City clerk, would you call the real call?
Okay. I'm sorry, who did that second, just for the record? I heard a motion from Councilmember Meyerhoffer. Okay, second from Councilmember Smiley. Thank you. All right. Do the real call vote. Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Bell? You're muted.
Sorry, I don't know how that happened. Aye.
All right. Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhoffer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, Mayor Protem, 5-0.
All righty. We're adjourned. See you Thursday.
See y'all Thursday.
See y'all Thursday.